Go ahead and get started here. Hey, Ron, how are you?
I'm good. A little tired.
We'll go ahead and call the Wilmer City Council Work Session Together for Monday, November 6th. First item on the agenda is public comment. We have one individual, James, has signed up. Are you wishing to speak in regards to the Rice Project?
Yeah.
Okay, would you like to wait until that presentation happens? Or would you like to speak now?
Yeah, no, I'd like to wait.
Okay, we'll allow you to wait, that'll be fine. First thing we have on the agenda is Small Cities Program Application, Ms. Bangston with the Wilmer HRA. Jill?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Jill Bangston, Candyway County Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and also with me today is Rick Goodman from the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership.
Pull your mic up just a little bit. Thank you.
You're welcome. And we are here to request your permission to submit a grant application to the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development for the Small Cities Development Program. So we have a little presentation here. Summary, Minnesota Deed is accepting preliminary applications from the cities for Small Cities Development Program funding. The deadline for the preliminary application is this week, November 9th. On December 14th, Deed will inform cities of their preliminary application status. And if Wilmer is selected to move forward in the application process, that application will be due February 22nd, and awards are announced in June. So Candyway County HRA is requesting your approval to submit the application. The HRA would administer the program. Funds would be used as follows. $253,008.37 to rehab 13 commercial buildings in the downtown area. $286,000 to rehab 13 homes in a targeted area on the north side of Wilmer. $600,000 to rehab 56-unit Hanson Apartments located at 401 to 413 Lakeland Drive Southeast. And $74,308 for HRA administration. Total request is $1,214,145. The next page is just that activity broken down again. Commercial, $253,837, 13 businesses. The homeowner rehab is 13 homes. Rental rehab is 56 units and four buildings. So it's a total rehab project of 82 units within 30 buildings. And the total request, again, $1,214,145. There is an additional $175,163 of funds that the city has from previous Small Cities projects you've been awarded. So that revolving amount also has to be spent before any new dollars will be paid out by deed, if your awarded funds. So examples of rehab that can be done, window door replacements, roof replacements, siding replacement, foundation repairs, electrical plumbing, heating system repair or replacement. And on that note, I'll say that the commercial and the homeowner areas were selected as another reason because of the transfer off of district heat than any residents in those areas have to complete by July 1st of 2020. Other things, installation, handicap accessibility and building code violations can be taken care of. Next slide shows then the homeowner rehab target area. This is on the north side, so Park Avenue way at the top. To the east is, you know, just right on the side of the lake, very past 7th Street, down to the railroad tracks and up 17th Street Northwest. Eligibility criteria, these are the income levels that people have to be in by their family size. So if you're in a Level 1, 100% of your rehab cost can come from the Small Cities Program, up to $25,000. And it's then a deferred loan for 10 years that's forgivable if you stay there for 10 years. If you move or transfer the property or sell it, the entire loan has to be repaid. The next slide is the commercial rehab. Eligibility requirements of the property owner must be current on mortgage payment, taxes and property insurance. Has to be located in the target area, which is Pacific Avenue on the north, 1st Street on the east, Trot Avenue on the south and 7th Street on the west. And a minimum of 20% of the total rehab cost must be provided by the property owner. And so the terms of assistance for the business owners is a deferred loan up to 60% of the rehab cost to a maximum of $40,000. And as long as they have the business and don't sell or transfer the property within seven years, this loan is also forgiven. And then finally, the rental rehab activity is for a loan to the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership for $600,000, 0% 30 years. Will assist in acquiring and rehabbing Hanson Apartments located at 401 to 413 Lakeland Drive. Primary purpose here is to keep the project affordable for low-income families and preserve the project. And here's the breakdown of that and the sources of funding. This was kind of a last-minute item that came up as we were planning our Small Cities project. It wasn't in the initial plan. And Rick will speak more to this, but he was informed by Minnesota Housing after October 19th that his project was selected to go to deed for this request. And so that's how it came into the project here. Finally, the last screen, your most previous Small Cities Development Program award to Wilmer was in 2012 for $1,048,702. That assisted 27 homeowners in Wilmer and Raymond. Two rental projects above commercial buildings in the downtown, nine businesses and Highland Apartments. And with that, Mayor, that is everything.
Thank you. Mr. Goodman, do you wish to speak at this point? Or did you want to wait in case there were questions?
If you have any questions.
Okay. Counsel, what, any conversation you'd like to have in regards to it? Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to suggest maybe they're going to stick around to the council meeting too, then?
Yeah, so if we...
When we address it.
If it is favorable, then we'll move it to the regular council.
Okay.
Yep. Let's correct. Councilmember Pagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jill, the Hanson Apartments, is that being sold? Or the current owners are...
I'm going to let Rick speak to that, thanks.
The project applied for prepayment of the existing 515 mortgage, Rick Goodman, Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership. And we were notified by USDA Rural Development that the project was for sale. There was a minority finding, so the ownership was advised to seek nonprofit ownership. We indicated we were interested in acquiring the property, and so we will be purchasing it.
So will you be paying property tax, then?
Yes. It'll be at the 4D rate because it is an affordable product with project-based rental assistance.
Okay, and then with this type of financing or ownership, if there's street assessments, will you be paying them too?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Because I know some of the HRA properties do not pay street assessments.
No, we pay assessments and taxes on all of our properties.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I see no conversation really against the project, so we will move it to the regular agenda. So that gives you a little bit of time to have to wait because I think on the agenda you are... Item number 10. So I guess if you were back by 7:15, it would be good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Rice Hospital lease discussion. I'll call on our city attorney, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Hand out a quick summary sheet of the transaction and then turn this over to Jill Radloff, council for the hospital board, who will give a summary of the key terms of the transactions. And then after Jill speaks, I think we're going to hear from Jenny Bolton, the bond council for the hospital, who's going to explain a public hearing item on the regular agenda at 7 o'clock. But hopefully she explains it sufficiently to the council that she won't need to stick around for that agenda item in the regular meeting.
So just from my understanding, if there are any questions on the bond council, either yourself or Jill will handle that, correct?
In the regular meeting, sure.
Correct.
It'll be me, I think.
Thank you. Jill?
All right. We have in front of you here a summary outline of what I'm going to review in terms of the documents that were provided to you in your materials.
Did you want this to go to the public, too?
That's fine. I don't think we have any.
Until we run out of copies, maybe, huh?
Yeah.
Well, do it. Good. Perfect, perfect.
Fernando.
Make sure, Fernando, can you make sure that our press get it first, please?
All right, there are...
Sorry about that. Thanks for helping out.
Four documents that were included in your materials. And as an overview of them, the first one is the operating lease. That lease provides for a 30-year term with automatic renewal term of another 30 years. There is an option to purchase after 10 years for the Rice Hospital. On the next item is a member control agreement for the new entity that is called Caris Health. That is the combined entity of the hospital, ACMC. And so together, that talks about how the hospital will function going forward. It includes local representation on the Caris Board. And we'll cover that in more detail here as I go through the summary items of the key points. The third document in your packet is an affiliation agreement. And I describe this as kind of the wrapper of everything that needs to happen in order to complete this transaction. And it defines the relationships between the hospital and ACMC and Centra Care. The fourth document in your packet is a guarantee agreement. And this is where Centra Care is guaranteeing all of the rent obligations that Caris or NUCO has going forward under the lease. So there is a parental guarantee provided by Centra Care. I'm going to now review some of the key terms. These are the key terms that the hospital board has addressed, along with committee members of the city council. We've negotiated this with Centra Care over the last several months, in particular in the last few weeks. So the first item that was key for the hospital board was service commitments and making sure that there are commitments to keep the hospital active in the city of Wilmer. So there are on page 16 of the lease, if you turn there, in section 512. There's a commitment to keep core services in the hospital operating during the whole term of the lease. I'm happy to read those to you if you need me to, but again, they talk about keeping core services such as inpatient beds, emergency department, surgery services, therapy services, ambulance services and obstetrical services. So those will be required to be maintained at the Rice Memorial Hospital. On the next page, 17, there's references to expanding physician specialty services at the hospital. And so there are examples of things that we hope will be added, but it will obviously depend on the circumstances. But there's a commitment to enhance services at the Rice Hospital. The next key item is section 513. It's also on page 17. And this is a commitment to have capital expenditures continue at the hospital, that there will be continued investment of at least $32 million over the first 10 years of the lease. Again, that was negotiated based on the historical investments that have been done at the hospital. So over that time period, this would continue to maintain the hospital at the levels that it is at currently. The next key item for the hospital board as we went through this process was keeping local control of the hospital and the operations. So I'm going to turn you now to the member control agreement. And that lays out the key governance of this entity. And you will see in section 3.1 of that, that the board that is going to govern this new entity, Caris Health, includes four designees that will be nominated by the Rice Hospital Board and then approved by Centra Care. And at least two of those designees will be Wilmer residents. That board consists of 10 total people. So there are the four of the Rice designees. There are four from ACMC. And then there are two from Centra Care that will be on that board. The CEOs will also participate in that board, but they will be non-voting members. There will be two, there will be co-CEOs, one from ACMC and one from Rice, that will be managing the new co-entity. So we will continue to have a say in the management operations of the hospital. We also will have appointees to Centra Care Board. And this is something that is unique in this affiliation. One of those appointees will be a Rice appointee and one will be an ACMC appointee. So that will allow us to have input on the parental Centra Care Board, which is something that is very unique to this Rice affiliation. The Caris Board, under section 3.3 of the member control agreement, will handle all the operations for Caris Health. However, those operations are subject to the Centra Care reserve powers, and those are laid out in the section 3.3. So, for example, things that Centra Care will have final approval of include appointing CEOs, changes in the CEOs, approving the strategic plan and the capital budget, or incurring additional indebtedness. So if you think about it, they will have control over the purse strings, so to speak, but they will have to comply with the terms of the lease in terms of investing and that sort of thing. These things that we have negotiated in terms of the reserve powers and the board structure, those cannot be changed by Centra Care without a supermajority vote of the Board of Caris Health. And that supermajority vote includes three Rice representatives and three ACMC representatives. And so we feel that this way, the deal that we've negotiated is the deal that will be in place unless, for some reason, our board member has determined that it's appropriate for it to be amended in the future. The next item on the summary to go over is, and I'll speak to this somewhat, and then Jenny Bolton can speak further on terms of the city bonds. So the way the arrangement works is, under the lease, the NUCO, Caris Health, will meet all the requirements for the bonds. So they will make all the payments sufficient for the principal and interest under the bonds. Centra Care has provided an unconditional guarantee that those payments will be made in order for the city to meet its bond obligations. In addition, there is a provision under the lease in section 3.1B that provides for an intergovernmental transfer from Caris Health to the city. That is in the amount of $300,000.
Could you tell us what page the city bonds... You didn't reference the page number for that.
Sure. That is in...
The operating lease, if I remember right.
It is. Section 3.1, on page 9. Talks about the base rent is set on an amount equal to the principal and interest payments of the hospital bonds. And then right below that is the reference to the intergovernmental transfer, which is set at $300,000. There is an escalator on that $300,000 amount that is tied to a tax levy increase of the city. So the $300,000 would increase by the same percentage that the tax levy increased, up to an amount of 3% per year. That intergovernmental transfer continues even if the purchase option, which I'll describe in just a moment, is exercised. So that intergovernmental transfer is committed to for at least 30 years. All right. The next key item that we spent a significant time negotiating is the purchase option, and that is on page 26 of the lease, section 11.5. The purchase option can only be exercised after the 10th anniversary of the lease. And it requires that Caris Health has paid off all of the bonds. So as a condition to exercising the purchase option, we have to be past the 10th anniversary, and the bonds have to have been fully paid off. At that time, Centra Care and Caris Health could elect to exercise and purchase the hospital property. In order to do that, they need to commit to at least another 10 years of the service commitment that I outlined at the beginning of the presentation. And they also need to commit to a capital commitment in that same amount over 10 years, so $32 million over years 11 through 20. As I also said, the intergovernmental transfer would continue even if they exercised the purchase option. In section 11.5B, there is a reference that all of the applicable procedural requirements would need to be met to exercise the purchase option. And if the charter remains in place, as it does right now with the language right now, that would require a public referendum by the city of Wilmer in order for the purchase option to be completed. One of the other items that obviously we've spent a lot of time on in terms of the management of the hospital and the hospital board is employees of the hospital. So in section 5.10 of the lease, it talks about the commitment to continue to employ the hospital's employees under the Caris Health brand. This is also in Article 3 of the affiliation agreement. They're largely, they talk about similar provisions. So employees of the hospital would receive their same positions now being employed by Caris Health, once we close the transaction. The conditions for them receiving that employment are completing a very streamlined application and then any required background checks that are needed. Employees would receive full credit for service and PTO that they have accrued. Some of that may be paid out, some of that will just be rolled over. All the union agreements will be honored. And there have been multiple employee forums that have been held with all the employees to communicate the benefits package and the arrangements that are being made. If there are questions on that, Bill Finskey and Mike Schramm are both here to help answer those, if there are any questions on that. All right. The next item on the summary is how we have made sure that the city and the Rice Hospital Board continue to have oversight and control of the facility. Because again, this is a lease, not a full transfer of the hospital. And Robert Scott can speak to this as well. One of the items is that there are reporting that Caris Health and Centra Care will need to do, complete to the hospital board. And so that is in section 5.11. And those reports are primarily in the nature of financial reports. Those will have to be made both to the city council and the Rice Board. They will report on how they are continuing to meet the capital investments and provide financial statements about how Caris Health is operating. In addition, there's a provision in section 7.3 called improvements to the leased assets. And before any improvements can be made, material improvements or alterations to the structure can be made to the hospital, those will need to be approved by the Rice Hospital Board. So if they want to add on to the hospital, that will need to be approved by the Rice Hospital Board. And as a result of that, the city council, as you approve minutes for the hospital board, you'd also have approval rights related to that. In section 11.6 of the lease, we have provisions talking about how the hospital board can enforce the terms of the lease. So if Caris Health or Centra Care were to breach the terms of the lease or the other related documents, the hospital board has authority to enforce the terms of the lease, including taking, you know, enforcement action or deciding, potentially to terminate the lease. The last item on the summary here that I wanted to go through is what happens if, for some reason, this all doesn't work? And we end up with, in a situation where we need to terminate the lease. So as lawyers, we have to think about this downside and, of course, protect the city of Wilmer and the citizens in that event. So we have spent a lot of time negotiating that section. And if you look particularly at section 11.4 of the lease, which starts on page 24. If the lease were to be terminated, the assets of the Rice Memorial Hospital would be returned to the city, along with a working capital amount that is consistent with the working capital amount that we expect to have at the end of the year, when we hope to complete the affiliation. So we'd be getting back working capital consistent with what we have contributed. If, for some reason, the city were the one who had breached the lease, and it is very difficult for me to come up with an example of how the city would breach this lease, but if that were to happen, then the city would need to pay Caris Health and Centra Care the book value of the investments, the new property that it had done. I've said assets here, that's actually incorrect. It's the new things that have been invested, not the full value of the assets. If Caris or Centra Care breached, then no payment is due from the city for taking the assets back. We may have other remedies that we could go off and seek, but that doesn't tie to a payment for receiving the assets back. If we get to the 30th year of the lease, and the lease just expires, Centra Care elects not to renew it, or gives us notice of non-renewal. Or if we, if Centra Care has proposed an expansion of the hospital that the city, the hospital board elected not to approve, which, and then Centra Care decides they want to terminate it, the lease, then the city has to pay the book value of the new assets or the improvements that have been made during that time period. We negotiated that the city would receive a credit that was based on any decrease of the investment fund balance that it received back at that time. So let me walk you through an example of that, because it is complicated. Say that the book value of the new assets at the time of the expiration of the lease was $15 million. We anticipate that our investment fund balance at the time of the affiliation will be maybe roughly $30 million. If at the 30th year, at the end of the lease, the investment funds now were only $25 million, then the concept is, is that Centra Care and Caris have used roughly $5 million of that investment fund to purchase this new property that they've put in the hospital. So we would be getting a $5 million credit on the assets that we are taking back. So we would only pay $10 million, and we'd be getting book value of assets of $15 million. So that, the idea is, is we've now accounted for the funds and how they've been used in terms of the assets we've acquired back. You're looking at me with, you can tell that was a negotiated provision, can't you?
[laughing]
All right.
Mayor, maybe I'll add a quick procedural note before we ask Jenny to explain the bonds and the item on your agenda for the regular meeting. Procedurally, to comply with the charter, at this point, you have a 30-year lease with an option for another 30-year term. Any lease of longer than three years of city-owned property is required to go to the Planning Commission for review and approval. That meeting for the Planning Commission is scheduled for this Wednesday night at 7:00 PM, I believe, at the fire station, the training room there. So before this comes back to you on the 20th for the anticipated final action, you will have a recommendation, hopefully, from the Planning Commission. In the event that the purchase option is exercised... In the event that the purchase option is exercised, which can't happen until at least 10 years into the lease, at that time, there are additional charter requirements that will have to be satisfied, one of which would be a public referendum under the charter. Additional requirements would be passing an ordinance authorizing the sale and potentially Planning Commission review of that sale at that point as well. I think I saw a hand go up. Is there a question at this point?
Councilmember Mesky.
I was just curious if that was going to be a question later is, what if that public referendum for purchase, if they exercise that option 10 years, what happens if that fails?
If the referendum is unsuccessful, then the lease would continue.
Okay. And there's no limit of when purchase option can be exercised after that? Since I don't see anything, I'm assuming it can happen...
Could happen at any point in time. They could wait till the 59th year to do that.
And if there's questions for Jill or I, at this point, we'd be happy to answer them. We can also have Jenny Bolton, the hospital's bond council, explain what's happening with the bonds and why you have an agenda item to call a public hearing for the 20th on your regular meeting agenda.
I prefer to call on Jenny at this point so we get all the issues on the table and then we can break those down one by one. And then, depending upon how the bond discussion goes, we'll probably be able to let you go and then hopefully the other two can cover for you. So Jenny, thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Jenny Bolton from Kennedy and Graven, and we're the City's Bond Council. The city has issued two series of bonds which are outstanding and are proposed to remain outstanding after entering into the lease. And so my focus is on issues related to federal tax and securities laws, issues that are related to the bonds, covenants that you've made in connection with the bond documents, and state law authority for entering into this lease. State law does authorize the use of a lease for a municipal hospital, so that's not an issue. From a federal tax law perspective, that is the reason for the public hearing that would be scheduled for the next council meeting. The reason is the bonds were issued as governmental purpose bonds and because it was a municipal hospital. Once you enter into an agreement with a private entity, including a nonprofit entity, to operate the hospital, those bonds become private activity bonds. Now, you can either pay off the bonds, that's one option, or you can leave the bonds outstanding. And if they remain outstanding, they can be requalified as qualified 501(c)(3) bonds. This doesn't change the nature of the bonds or the obligations, they remain in place. But you do need to go through some procedures in order to meet the federal tax law, and one of those is a public hearing because if they'd been initially issued with a nonprofit operator, you would have needed to have, had a public hearing at that time. So instead, we do that public hearing now. And then there are a few other tax requirements as part of that. There is a certification that the city will need to give, that the nonprofit will need to give, will need to obtain an opinion that they are a 501(c)(3) qualified entity, so a legal opinion. I'll give a legal opinion. And then there will be a filing with the IRS. In addition, before that, there needs to be a review to make sure that the bonds do meet all the requirements of a qualified 501(c)(3) bond, which are a little bit different from the requirements for a governmental purpose bond. There's a different private use analysis now that there is a private entity operating it. The use then doesn't, the use by that entity is no longer a factor. And so you then look at other arrangements with other entities who might be using the hospital. So that's another analysis that needs to be completed before this can be requalified, qualified as qualified 501(c)(3) bonds. So that's the reason for the public hearing, is in order to meet the qualifications for redesignating these bonds to remain in place as qualified 501(c)(3) bonds. From a federal securities perspective, there are a couple of things that need to happen. This will be a material event for the 2012 bonds, which were publicly offered. So there is a system in place for making disclosures that all bond investors have access to. It's a website that's operated by the Municipal Securities Board, and they, it's called Emma. It's, you put an announcement out in public and then everybody has access to that same information. Also, there will need to be contact with the credit rating agency so that they can make sure that there aren't any issues with the rating on the bonds. So that's on the 2012 bonds, which were publicly offered. So that's the federal tax and securities law issues. And then in addition to that, you have some covenant issues under the documents that authorized issuing the bonds in the first place. And most of those have been addressed in the lease. The nonprofit will be responsible for continuing to operate the hospital, for paying an amount sufficient to pay the principal and interest on the bonds. So a lot of the terms of that lease address the covenant requirements in the bond documents. And then, in addition to that, while the bond documents do authorize entering into a lease, and so on the 2012 bonds, there isn't any consent required. On the 2013 bonds, which are privately placed with a consortium of local banks, they will need to provide their consent in order to enter into that lease. So that's, that's kind of the issue to address on the document side. So really, those are the procedures, and if you have questions, I can address...
What's the value, the total value of the bonds?
Oh, the outstanding principal amounts of those? You know, I don't know that I have that, about 35 million outstanding? Okay. Oh, of the 2012 bonds? Okay. And then in addition to that, there was originally 9 million of the, so down to 8 on the 2013 bonds.
So 8 and 35, so about 43.
Does council have any questions? Councilmember Christiansen of the Bond Council?
Does Centra Care have to provide anything as far as the ability to pay these bonds?
I think Jill can answer that question better than I. There is the guarantee coming from Centra Care...
To us.
To the city, yes.
Correct. I mean, to you or to the federal government?
Yes. So that goes back to those federal tax requirements, and one of those is, in order, for me to give my opinion that this works from a bond perspective, I will need to obtain from their legal counsel an opinion that they are a qualified 501(c)(3) organization. And then they will also need to provide, and it would actually come from Caris, the LLC that is formed, but from a tax perspective, because the nonprofit is the sole member of that LLC, they're, from a tax perspective, they're viewed as the same entity. So it's their counsel giving that opinion. The LLC, the lessee under the lease, will also need to provide a certification of certain tax representations.
Are you Bond Council? Any of the other entities have, that have gone into lease agreements or have been purchased by Centra Care? Melrose, Suck Center?
No, I have not been involved in those transactions.
Okay. Otherwise, I'd ask, how did that go? Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarado.
I was just wondering, these transactions, do they affect the bond rating of the city or, you know, I would say, rating? Or influence it positively or negatively or...
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I think that is a question for the rating agency, and that is a conversation that needs to be had. I think the city's finance director and municipal advisor, Springstead, are probably in the best position to have that conversation. Right now, the existing bonds have an impact on the city's rating. And so, you know, I don't, I don't know positive or negative one way or another. That's something that they will need to analyze.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott, can we make sure that, or Mr. Holland, can we make sure we have an answer for Councilmember Alvarado for the next meeting when that comes up, please? Anybody else have a question specific to Bond Council? Thank you very much for your time. Just want to ask the public if they have a question for you. And then after that, if Mr. Scott and Jill are okay, you could be free to leave if you chose. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to have a question for Bond Council as to the question which we placed on the next agenda, which will have its own public hearing? So it would be a question specific at this point. Seeing an hearing, none? I think you're free to enjoy your evening. Thank you for the drive out. Appreciate that. Next, we'll go back to Mr. Scott.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anything else to present. At this point, if the council has questions for myself or Jill Radloff, I'm sure we'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you. And we have one member of the public that wishes to speak. James, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is James Toms. I reside at 1001 Fourteenth Avenue Southeast.
You don't have to worry about the time tonight.
I'm just, oh, I don't have to worry about my time? Okay. All right.
Hold on a minute now. I know you. Hold on a minute here now. Okay. Let's keep it in, you know...
I will try and keep it short. Okay. So I do have a few comments and constructive criticism about the agreement that we're talking about here tonight. And I will go ahead and present those. So number one, we're talking about the affiliation agreement. Okay. Section 3.6. No, this is not the right one. Okay. So the assumption of the collective bargaining agreements, I don't think that's in the affiliation agreement. Someone help me out.
Yes, it is.
It's in the lease. Okay, I'm sorry. Pardon me, wrong document.
Page, page 15 and 16 is the employee part. Is that what you're looking for?
Yep. Okay. So number 3.6, I don't even see 6 in here.
It's in the affiliation agreement on page four.
Thank you.
It's in the affiliation agreement.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay. So right now, the affiliation agreement, Section 3.6 says Caris will assume all collective bargaining agreements related to the transferred employees in place on the possession date, subject to adjustment to reflect the National Labor Relations Act, and will fully comply with the NLRA. The MNA lawyers looked at this and suggests that possibly Caris will assume and be bound by all collective bargaining agreements related to the transferred employees in place on the possession date, and will recognize the exclusive bargaining representatives of the transferred employees in compliance with the National Labor Relations Act. I think there is a fair amount of wiggle room to what is there currently, and I just ask that you would consider that.
Hold on on that point. Mike, are you understanding what's being asked here?
I've got a...
Because on my notes, it said, "On questions on these, this area should go to Bill and Mike," is what I have, so...
Oh, okay. We have copies for the calendar, too.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Do you want to...
Make sure that our press gets it as well, please.
Okay. I will go ahead and continue. Point two, I guess there is some question on the continuity of services of the affiliation The affiliation agreement covers inpatient beds, emergency departments, surgical services, therapy services, ambulatory services, and obstetrical services. And so I'm guessing, I'm questioning, does dialysis, is dialysis considered a therapy service? And is the inpatient services that are housed at Rice Memorial Hospital, are they considered under this agreement? My third point is regarding the insurance. Open enrollment begins tomorrow. We were mailed out information. Obviously, it's in the mail today, so it won't receive, we won't get it until Wednesday. And so I'm just kind of curious, we're going to have rollouts of what this looks like. I guess one of the main points is, with all of this transparency that the hospital has been offering, we're just looking at this going, okay, we could have, we could have just picked them up. They could have been mailed out on Saturday instead of Monday, so we would have them to look, to look at either on Monday or Tuesday so we can make selections for us. We feel like we're being told that we're being transparent with and yet feel like we're being held at an arm's length a little bit here. And so I just wanted to voice that opinion and of myself and from other staff members.
Just a minute.
Yeah.
What is the length of time on the open enrollment for the new insurance?
Tomorrow through the 20th.
Tomorrow through the 20th. So the 7th through the 20th, so it's just 13 weeks.
Just shy of two weeks.
Shy of two weeks. And that's normal that it's been in the past?
Yeah.
It's the same process.
Okay. Thank you.
It's usually that the information is presented so you can, you can get it, you can digest it, you can go, okay, day one, I'm going to choose this, you know? That would, that would have been nice.
Okay.
Okay. As far as pension goes, I just want to mention that there is no real guarantee in the affiliation agreement that the generous offer that Rice has, has tried to make from PERA to the point of contributing to the employer, I'm sorry, contributing to the employee's retirement account. Pardon me, I'm a little bit nervous, so. And so there is no, well, we don't need a guarantee, but there's something there that says, we would like something to stay in effect for a certain amount of time, or is this just going to be a one-year thing? Or how is this going to operate? And then it's going to go to bare bones. I mean, I just can see that as a, as a potential stumbling point down the road. In addition to that, I have some, a few nonrepresented questions. Number one, the City Council asked for employee representation on a, on a board that would have employee input into the process. And there is a employee, help me out here, employee engagement committee. That, that group of employees from Rice ACMC and other Rice entities and some Centra Care employees and Wilmer Medical Service employees is mainly a one-direction committee, as far as I can tell. And so it's basically how to get the information coming from up top to the employees down below. And there's not really a lot of... And there's not really a lot of input from, back from that. So, they, they had one meeting, and I talked with two of the, the group members. And they gave me this indicator that, yeah, they want to hear what's going on in the process, but it's mainly about getting that information out there, and there's not really a lot of input that they would have into any of the planning process, if you will. And so, that, that bothers me a little bit, because we certainly haven't had a lot of input into the process. There's a place where we can ask questions about the merger. Some of those questions get answered, some of them don't. I guess the, and I will, I will add one final thing, and it's just a point of personal interest. If there were to be something negative to happen at Rice Memorial Hospital, is there something in place in the contract, in the lease, that, not accusers, what's the, plaintiffs would bring their case against Rice Memorial Hospital, which is no longer an entity? Is there any contingency plan for stuff that happens before this transition after that?
I believe our city attorney can answer that question.
Well, I mean, you're, the city will continue to have the Rice Memorial Hospital Board in existence. It will meet periodically. I understand the bylaws are being probably revised in the near future to reflect its changing role, but it will meet, it will have public meetings, it will obviously have the opportunity to take any concerns from staff or other interested persons about operations at the hospital that will continue to oversee what's happening at the hospital.
So, I'm sorry.
And then the liability question that you asked, so the, the current and future liabilities will be on the responsibility of Caris Health. Is my understanding correct?
In the definition of assumed liability.
Okay. Okay.
And so, that is being transferred over Caris Health.
I'm not, I'm not wishing anything that, no.
Well, we all know healthcare, so. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Right. Is there anybody else from, Jill or Robert, do you wish to respond to any of those? Otherwise, I think the majority of those, Mike, maybe you and, you and Bill can get back with them on those. I think those are specific concerns unless council has a desire to hear the outcomes of those questions.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I don't have something specific about the lease agreement, but I have a question for Mr. Schramm. I was just curious as to how the name Caris grew, or it got developed, or what's, you know, we hear, but I, I don't know if it's an acronym, or can you explain that to us so we can understand that better, please?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Elvorado, I'll just answer that question. We had an internal committee of stakeholders from all three organizations that actually spent a lot of time working on that particular issue. Certainly, in the interest of time, having a name for the new company is going to be important as we are putting documents together. But that, that group spent a lot of time on this particular process, developed a lot of internal criteria. We had marketing folks involved, and typically with logos and names and marketing and things like that, that's kind of where the expertise comes from. But we had a lot of stakeholders from each of the three organizations involved in that. Had certain criteria that we thought were really important across all three organizations. Had done, did a lot of research on names and healthcare systems and those types of things, not only in the state of Minnesota, but across the country, really through working through a very thorough process, narrowed it down to a short list of names. And within the executive committee, the group that has been working on a lot of these things, narrowed it down to a short list, and really, the, the leadership of the three organizations arrived at the same, in the same spot, as far as Caris and, and what we thought would be good for our future. Caris itself, as far as the spelling in the name, doesn't necessarily have a meaning, per se, and there's a lot of systems across the state, such as Aligna Health, Essentia, other systems that started from somewhere. One of the things I think we found with the process is, coming up with a new name and going through all the legalese to look at whether or not there's another system that has a similar name or the same name, and things like that, were certainly a part of the, part of the process. Care, certainly in a tie to Centricare, was an important part of this as well. And I would just say, the conclusion, it was a consensus amongst the organizations and the stakeholders of what we felt was the best name moving forward. We really feel like we're going to define together with this new organization what that brand of that name and the value of that name will be moving forward. We feel good about that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Did you wish to respond to any of James's question, or do you want to take those offline, or how do you wish to do it? I didn't see a desire of the council to engage at this point.
I'll, I'll leave that to the mayor and the council. I'll respond to whatever questions you'd like me to respond to. We do have some board members here this evening.
Sure.
Dr. Allen, our chair, and Bill can speak to any finance issues as well.
Sure. Perfect. Okay. Councilmember, Councilmember Mesky, I want to get back to the public, too.
I understand. I think the contract, insurance, and pension pieces could be dealt with between you and employees. My question, though, is for, because service commitments is one of, a near and dear piece, and I'm glad that we're addressing it. If you could just touch on the comments that were just made about inpatient services and dialysis, that kind of piece, and why it's not in here, and how we would approach that.
So, that was, we had a lot of discussion between leadership, the Rice Memorial Board, leadership and members of the council, and the, the committee that worked through all these things. We, first of all, what we're trying to do, obviously, is enhance our healthcare system and provide any and all services that are feasible and practical now and moving forward. Certainly, to any community that has a community hospital, some of those core services are certainly essential to us and what we do for our community. So, I think that was, there was a lot of discussion amongst the committee and amongst members, both of the Rice Memorial Board and of the city. And certainly, we want to be able to provide as many services as we can moving forward, knowing that now, and ten years from now, and twenty years from now, things changed dramatically in healthcare. And we defined as best we felt was a core definition of services that we believe are going to be important for our future. Not being definitive in listing every last service that we provide to the community. I think part of what goes on in healthcare is today, even where we were five years ago and ten years ago, and where we're going to be five, ten, and twenty years from now, healthcare is changing dramatically. And we want to be flexible, yet define those core services that we think are really important for our future.
So, I mean, in bed, inpatient beds that are addressing inpatient concerns, and therapy services might include dialysis.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we'd have a fairly extensive list.
Yes.
Very good.
We wanted to be definitive, yet make sure that there's flexibility, knowing that how we provide services into the future, and how we work in partnership at the local level with Rice and A C M C coming together and Centricare Health to look at how we, for instance, provide for dialysis services, nephrology services, urology services, and you can kind of go down the line.
So, we could consider that a therapy, then?
We, okay. Sorry.
A service.
That's what I said.
Anybody else from the public that wishes to speak? James, I think that Mike and Bill will, and Doug will talk about how that's defined in the contract with you specifically, and we'll do that offline, if that's okay. Anybody else from the public that wishes to speak to the documents that the council is reviewing in work session? And just for the public's benefit, so the next meeting will be the Planning Commission, which will meet on Wednesday at seven o'clock at the fire station. And then, the council will determine, after their dialogue this evening, if we will have another public meeting or not. And at this point, we're anticipating that having another public meeting, that that would happen at one of the local areas that would be large enough to hold a big crowd. And then, from that, it'll come back to the council on the twentieth. And that the council will have the opportunity at that point to make a decision on the twentieth. So, the earliest the council is going to make a determination on this, if we move forward on this, is going to be on November twentieth. That'll be the earliest date that the council acts on, official action, if that's the desire of the council. Anybody else from the public that wishes to speak at this point? Otherwise, we're going to take it to the council table. Okay, council, any discussion? Are you satisfied with what we have at this point? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, what happens to Rice Care and Home Medical and the Rice Trust? I don't know if you talked about it.
Jill, do you want to handle that, or do you want Mike to handle that?
Rice Care and Rice Home Medical will continue to exist. They will then become, Rice Medical is a separate entity, so that one will become a subsidiary of Caris Health going forward. The trust will continue to exist as well. And we will, as one of the closing conditions, we will have to evaluate whether or not we need to make any changes into the trust documents to specifically reference Caris Health. But we, in negotiating the lease, made sure that we complied with the terms of the trust, that reference continuing to use the Rice name, the portraits being in the, in the, on display at the hospital, and continuing to have equal access for the hospital. So, we've met the core requirements of the trust in negotiating the lease provisions.
So, who would decide what payments would go out to what patients that are in need?
So, the trustees of the trust will continue to exist. Right now, I believe it is, Brimmer Trust is the corporate trustee, and there are two Rice Hospital Board members that are trustees, and that will continue the same way. Nothing, nothing is really happening with the trust. Those assets continue to be held by that entity, by the trust.
Okay. And then, it says all employees get to keep their jobs, you know, after a successful background check? What timeframe, then? Because I know big companies, they come in and they bring a headhunter in, and they want to be more efficient. What guarantee is there for them?
I'm going to let, I'm going to let Mike speak to that one, then, in terms of.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Fagerly, can you, you want to just restate the question real quick?
Well, it says all the current employees get their positions.
Yep.
Upon successful background check.
Yep. And we've spoken to that. We've had employee forums and really talked about the transition and what that's going to look like. I can tell you that Centricare has been very supportive of how that transition will look moving forward. It's, we tried to make it as simplified as we could, and ensure with staff, as we shared with them, that they're coming in at their same F T E level, same work schedule, hours, and so forth. And it's a seamless transition with a fairly short list of items on the list that we actually have to comply with from a legal standpoint. So, we see that transition working well and being seamless. We've tried to make sure that all that detail is out there, so people understand what that looks like.
Okay. Thank you.
Then timeline for when the employees will know that they are being retained?
Well, we've already, we've already spoken to that in forums, and whatever the transition date would be, is whatever the transition date will be. And we will have all the documents and information prepared, so that all the, the employees have that information filled out, assistance with filling it out, so it is a seamless transition, and all the employees will be brought over. We've been very clear with them.
So, really, it's not in your hand at this point, it's more in the council's hand when the documents get signed? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. And whenever the effective date, which we've talked about one one.
Right.
Yep.
When this first came to me, I wanted to make sure that we maintain quality healthcare to our citizens locally. I wanted that to be done in Wilmer. I wanted to make sure all of our health services remained in Wilmer, and that if there was an increase in healthcare services provided, we would look at that increase, but not look at a decrease. So, I wanted to make sure that our citizens were, were well protected. And then, I wanted to make sure that our employment, retention of our valued employees maintained itself. And I have attended countless hours of meetings in regards to this, not near as many as other people have. But the documents that are in front of us clearly reflect what I was hoping would happen with such an agreement. So, I want to, again, hats off to all of the people that have worked on that. I know we have a number of members of the board, I know Doug Allen's back there, Ms. Carruthers is back there, I don't know who else is back there. Eric Wyberg's back there, I don't know who else is back there on the board, but Peggy seats him. Okay, don't see you over there. Okay, thanks, Peggy. So, thank you guys, too, for being at the table, so. And if I missed anybody, stand up and I'll call on you, so. Anyways, thank you, guys.
There.
Oh, sure. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, so with that, we'll move to, oh, the next thing is, we need to determine whether we want to have a special meeting that we could have next Tuesday at a location that the administrator is prepared to tell us where that could be, I believe.
It could be either the Conference Center or at the County H H S building.
Okay. So, council, are you, is there a desire to have another, another public hearing? I know at the last meeting, we talked, and we wanted to have another meeting to where the public would feel welcome to come in and express their opinions in the absence of the TV and the microphones and all that. So, is there, does there do that? Councilmember Schwantus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's really important that we give the opportunity to the public to speak. If they choose to come or not come, that is their decision, but at least we have an opportunity for them, so I would like to see that.
I echo that.
I'm seeing consensus on that. So, next Tuesday, seven P M. Do you want it at Health and Human Services, or do you want it at the Conference Center? Did you determine a cost on the, on the Convention Center?
I, I don't have a cost on the Conference Center, no.
Well, we know the Health and Human Services will be at no cost, so.
It should be larger than.
Let's do it there. Okay, let's do it at Health and Human Services, then, if that's open.
If it's open.
A lower level at Health and Human Services.
Got it.
Seven P M.
Tuesday, the fourteenth.
Tuesday, the fourteenth.
Tuesday, November fourteenth.
Okay. Okay?
We have a time, or we're going to.
Seven P M.
Seven?
Seven P M.
Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't think that's what he said.
You confirm that, right, Mike?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have liquor license violation testimony. Chief Felton and our city clerk. Thank you from the public who was here, really appreciate you being here. And again, thank you for all of you sticking with us through this process, so. I'm not sure who's going to take it, I've got both of you listed here, so I wasn't told who's going to start, so. Chief Felton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you know, the Wilmer Police Department is tasked with liquor compliance checks in the city of Wilmer, both on-sale and off-sale locations. On September seventh, two thousand seventeen, a compliance check was done at the Sunray Spirits Store in Wilmer. We had two twenty-year-old Wilmer Police Department employees that were used in the compliance check. They were sold a twelve-pack of beer at the Sunray Spirits Store. The store clerk was identified, a twenty-three-year-old employee. He admitted to selling the beer to one of our Wilmer Police Department employees. He had checked their I D. However, he only looked at the year of their date of birth, and not the month and day, so the, showing that they were under twenty-one. The store clerk was cited for selling alcohol to a person under twenty-one. And as part of the ordinance for first-time violation for business selling to a person under twenty-one, they're to be brought to the council.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk Thompson?
As Chief Felton stated, the facts of the compliance check recently conducted by his department, a first violation for off-sale liquor license holder Coyote Commercial Ventures Incorporated doing business at Sunray Spirits was issued. The October sixteenth work session, the assistant manager appeared before the council, and council requested my office to contact the owner of Sunray Spirits to request his appearance before the council. Tonight, the owner, Doug Sorensen, is present to explain the measures being taken by his establishment to eliminate future violations.
Thank you. And then, the follow-up question to that was, what are the, what are the steps in the process? Now, that was asked at the last council meeting as well.
Sure. When someone wants to apply for a liquor license, they come into my office, and they are giving applications to complete their several forms, depending on what type of license they want to apply for. We get, you know, they're, they have to fill out the application, they have to designate, you know, some resident manager, show that they have insurance for liquor, liquor compliance, I should say, and then they pay a fee based on which type of license they're applying. I should say, and then they pay a fee based on which type of license they're applying for. The full packet is then submitted to the police department for their approval. They do background checks and, you know, whatever's necessary on their end. Then when we get it back from them, we present it here, and it's also sent in then to the state of Minnesota, and they do their, from there.
The question of the council was if, in the violation steps, is what the question from the council?
Oh, the violation steps? I'm sorry.
So, Mr. Scott, do you want to handle that?
I certainly can. So the city has established minimum penalties that must be imposed for each violation. Those are minimums. The first violation is a written warning to the license holder and a request that the license holder appear before the council, which is a process we're about to undertake. For a second violation, the minimum suggested penalty is a $1,000 fine, and then it increases to $2,000. For a third violation, $3,000. For a fourth violation, fifth and subsequent violations are referred to the full council for consideration. At any point, the council, if it feels the circumstances warrant, are certainly able to impose a larger penalty than is recommended by the ordinances. Those are simply minimums that must be established at every stage, but the council always has discretion if the circumstances warrant to increase the penalty.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you. Is there something in there as far as any erasure of, they go so long without any failures, their past is erased and go back to zero?
Yes, there is, and I believe, is it, I want to say it was a calendar year, but it could have been longer. I'm sorry, didn't make a specific note of it.
I thought it was one compliance cycle. If they had a clean compliance cycle, it went back.
Is that what it is?
That's what I thought. I don't know, they're looking it up.
Oh, you can give them some time to look it up and see if there's something else.
Is, is the, Mr. Sorensen here?
Yes.
Mr. Sorensen, last, last time you had your assistant manager present in...
Yeah, I apologize for that. I certainly would have been here, but I was on jury duty in my home state. I just couldn't get away.
Sure. And so we had requested that, if staff could see if you could be here tonight, so...
Absolutely. Happy to be here.
Basically, what we're wanting to know is how we're going to make sure this doesn't happen again, and make sure that you're aware of the tools available in Wilmer to make sure this doesn't happen.
I am. There is one, one thing, the certification of the liquor training classes that you do, it would certainly be helpful if those were offered once a month instead of every other month. We have, I have a lot of employees that are, these are second jobs for them, and I have a hard time scheduling the liquor training. The young man that violated this, he has not received the liquor training yet because he hasn't been able to attend the class, which would have helped. That's one thing you could do for me that would be helpful. For our standpoint, what we're doing is, we've instituted some new policies. Anybody that violates ourselves to a minor will be terminated immediately, and we're going to make sure that everyone is certified. We're in the process of recertifying the ones that have already been and getting the new ones up to speed. And then we've put in some new software in our computer that requires that a birth date be entered. It will not allow a transaction unless the birth date's in there and is the correct date.
Okay, thank you. Council, any comments for Mr. Sorensen?
Yes, sir.
How many employees do you have?
Well, I've got a total of nine, but only about four of them work in the liquor store. They rotate in and out of the C store and the liquor store.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Felton, is it, is it possible for us to try to get another class in so that it could get his staff trained more efficiently?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if that would be helpful to local businesses, we can certainly look into that, and I would think it would be very possible to do that.
It would, it would be a real help for us. We've, we've had some difficulty with the two, two-month deal.
Okay. So if you have concerns about that, just feel free to reach out to the chief and he'll help you out, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Mesky?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for coming. This is exactly why we invite the owner to come in, because this went infinitely better than it did last time, so I appreciate you coming in and explaining it.
I'm sure that it did, but...
And, and I say it all the time, don't want to see you in here again, so hopefully these compliance...
No, I don't want to be here again, believe me. I'm embarrassed that I have to be here this time.
So thank you.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have energy credit presentation from Siemens Industries. Mr. Christensen, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We've got a little bit of time here, a short presentation from Laura Malwitz and her crew. I'll let her introduce them on an energy savings project that we've been exploring some options with, and she knows a whole lot more than I do about it, so I'll let her go from there.
Thank you.
Well, let's hope so. Well, hello, council members. Thank you so much for having us this evening. Like Sean said, my name is Laura Malwitz. I'm with Siemens, and we appreciate the opportunity to present our findings of a preliminary assessment at the Civic Center. And you might say, oh, my goodness, not the Civic Center. Again, I thought we just approved a big refrigeration project there, but there is a, you know, method to this madness and a reason why this timing is how it is. And the goal of this preliminary assessment was to even just determine if there was an opportunity for the city of Wilmer to be able to leverage energy and operational savings at this facility to help pay for and finance not only your upgrades anticipated at the refrigeration center, but to also look at a more broad overall transformation of that facility. And so today, quickly, we'll go, so why even consider an energy savings project at this time? We'll talk about our progress to date, as we have been working on this information and digesting some energy and operational savings opportunities since July. We'll also briefly go over the preliminary assessment results. It will definitely be a Cliff Note version of that, but we have found some very interesting things within this facility. And then we'll talk about what are the, kind of, the next steps. How do you, how do you even achieve something like this? And so why an energy savings project? Well, we know that if we can utilize the energy savings of that facility and how it is operating currently, the city of Wilmer has the potential to not only replace and upgrade the refrigeration system, you may be able to stretch your budget by as much as $2 million without expanding your existing budget. Okay? So this is not jeopardizing any plans that you already have in place. This is just expanding and offering to fix more things at that facility by using what we have in Minnesota is performance contracting legislation. Now, the other pieces that we're looking at is, we know how much that building costs to operate. It costs about $600,000 a year to operate that building. $180,000 of that are utility bills, okay? So almost one-third of the costs are utility bills. So if we can learn how to decrease how much it costs to operate that building from an energy perspective, and by improving a lot of the other things with this building, such as lighting and aesthetics, although it's maybe not be able to quantify it now, we hope to increase those revenues as well. So we're looking at a more budget-neutral facility. Now, why do this in conjunction with the refrigeration system? Okay, this is data from your asset management program, your facility management program. I was fortunate enough to work with this, with Mr. Christensen, over the course of the last two to three years. So it's mostly about what we know about this particular facility. Over the next, well, now three years, up until 2021, this facility, just on a life cycle of systems, is anticipated to have $5 million worth of needed upgrades. And in a utopian world, you'd love to be able to pay for all of that right now and not keep pushing some of those down the road to keep contributing to deferred maintenance, and I'm sure you all know what that is. And it also happens that 75% of those systems will affect energy. So if you see the two bars on the very far right, those are the refrigeration systems that you already have a plan in place to correct, and what we're challenging and asking is to say, can we do something better? Can we add more value to this project because of what we know? Can we capture some of that energy savings to not just pay for the two bars on the right, but a lot of the bars above it and below it? So what have we done to date? So so far, we have talked to your facilities staff, your parks staff, Mr. Christensen, about the facility. We've collected all of your utility bills, so your gas, your electric, your water. We've done a pretty detailed analysis of what that means. We've also done an onsite assessment with our senior energy engineer, as well as your city staff, to go through that facility, so we spent a lot of time asking questions, listening a lot to what is going on at that facility. What else can we contribute towards to fix the building, to make it operate better and serve your constituents better? We also then looked at all the deficiencies, all the areas where we could gain some savings. We looked at a financial impact as well briefly to see what does this mean for your budgets? Can you do this? Can you expand your project without affecting your already-approved budget? We presented those results to Mr. Holland and Mr. Christensen about a month ago, and that leads us here today to talk about next steps. So when we talk about, how could we expand this scope? The areas that we've identified are in envelope, so that's, you know, where all the pieces and parts of the building come together. So that's talking about weatherization, insulation. We know some of the glass block on the walls is deteriorating. We know that there's a lot of opportunity to seal that building up, which is, in our industry, air tightness is one of the greatest opportunities to save energy efficiency for not a lot of money. We're also looking at lighting improvements, so converting all the lights in that building to LEDs, which not only gains savings, but it also improves the overall aesthetics and experience within a facility. We looked at controls upgrades, sprinkler upgrades. I know you've already made some audio visuals, but we said, hey, were there any things that got left off your wish list? Can we incorporate that? And we also considered solar. So all in all, after we look at this very integrated project, in addition to what we could probably capture from that refrigeration system, heat recovery savings, you're looking at anywhere from $60,000 to $120,000 a year in savings just in energy and operations. That's a lot of money to buy other equipment to get those projects, you know, above and below the, the bars paid for. That also means that you can have a better condition. You know, we'd look at solving probably about 75% to 90% of your next five-year needs of that facility, and we can do that in this integrated project, and it's not going to affect your budgets currently. So again, we're looking at utilizing your existing approved budget and project, capturing some more savings from that, making additional upgrades, and getting a bigger project result out of it, so that this, this building will hopefully be fully, completely off your capital improvement checklist, and you can move on to focus on other city initiatives. So how do you achieve this, right? It sounds great, right? I could just sell some energy savings and say, hey, here, go spend another couple million dollars. Well, there are a lot of laws that allow us to be able to do this in a company like Siemens or an energy service company. So the state of Minnesota has specific legislation that allows cities and local governments, pretty much anybody who owns a lot of facilities, to dip into this untapped financing mechanism to utilize those savings to help pay for projects. It's one of the state's commitments to allowing cities to have another vehicle to deter deferred maintenance, right? Because they say, hey, you got to reduce your energy, you have to improve your facilities, and we say, well, how do you pay for that? Well, this is one of the vehicles of how to pay for that. There are a lot of pros to this type of procurement process. I've just highlighted a few. One of those is it's guaranteed results. So Siemens, if we decide to move forward with this project and develop some more engineering, we would guarantee the savings that we would promise the city of Wilmer, okay? And if for some reason we would not meet those guaranteed savings, we would cut you a check for the difference. It keeps us honest, and it keeps the whole project from an integrated standpoint, moving in the best direction. The other thing is, is it's a turnkey solution, so there are no change orders. Oftentimes, in typical engineering and architecture, which is where I hail from, so don't ask me how I know this, but there are oftentimes a lot of change orders that happen throughout the process of an engineering project. We would say, nope, we're going to promise you what we promise you, and there will be no change orders. We'll guarantee that, and we'll get it done on your schedule, which for this project, I know is very important, because you only have a certain amount of time where the ice is out and where the construction of this project would happen. So this is saying, you know, we're going to still stay on that scheduled timeline, we're just going to try and give you a much more comprehensive project. We'd also utilize local subcontractors, so we would definitely work with your approved engineering firm, Stevens. It's weird, it rhymes, Stevens, Stevens. But we would work with them and collaborate with them to make sure that the design of all of those systems are working for the greater good of the whole facility, not just a couple systems. And that's something that we do all the time. Just a little bit about us, we've been utilizing this legislation and this form of procurement over the last 20 years. I know Mr. Holland has expressed his familiarity with it from coming from Colorado. We're currently working in the process of going through this phase two with a few other cities in the state of Minnesota, as well as Wisconsin, so just locally. And just over the last five years, I think we've been able to help cities and counties save over $1 billion in energy, which is very exciting. And that just happened over about, you know, 200 cities, over 300 projects. So this is something that we're very familiar at, and this is, I think, a great opportunity that the city of Wilmer has on your hands, specifically just because of the nature of this facility and where you are in the process. So we have done this preliminary assessment, which is the far-left block, meaning we've estimated some savings, we've looked at potential scopes of work, and the next step would be to move into a more detailed analysis. And I had prepared a letter of intent, which kind of outlines that next step. I brought it with me today, and I can leave it here with you and submit it to the council. And what that would allow us to do is to move into the more detailed analysis where we can really free up a lot of our engineering, and we can start putting those guarantees in place. So can we guarantee it's going to be, you know, $113,900-something dollars worth of savings a year? And how that works, we'd start working with Stevens immediately, so we can maximize efficiencies on engineering, and this would all happen over probably the course of the next 90 days. So this is just, you know, a letter of intent to say, hey, yes, we would like to at least explore this in more detail, and then we would work with you and your facility staff over the course of that 90 days and present back to you what those actual guarantees And so with that, I'd like to open up to any questions that you might have.
Can you explain how this is similar to the Honeywell program that the city used a number of years ago on some of its other buildings?
Can you elaborate more on that project for the Honeywell?
Well, I was looking to see if Steve Olkins was here, but he's not. Basically, they came in and did an energy audit, and they looked at our lights, they looked at our heating, air conditioning, and then they put systems in place where they monitored those on a monthly basis.
Mm-hmm.
And then they came in and they adjusted everything.
Mm-hmm.
Is it similar to that?
If I could know a little bit more about the, the process, sounds familiar, but to me, that sounds like a retro-commissioning project, if they just tightened things up and made sure things were operating more efficiently.
Right, but they had a guarantee as well.
Mm-hmm.
So they had a guaranteed outcome.
Yep. So, so that sounds to me very familiar to what we would also do at this facility, retro-commissioning, but that would be a small piece of it. So we would expand upon that and give a much more holistic recommendation and sets of guarantees. And especially since the process that you're going through right now, and just based on this facility and where the system life cycles are in this building, you know, you'll probably be replacing a lot of these systems in the next five to seven years anyways, or it'll be asked of you too. So this is a way to fix all of those things immediately and keep it on schedule, and we can gain a lot of efficiencies by utilizing the construction time that you've already approved with the refrigeration system.
Council questions? Councilmember Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarity's sake, I think you maybe alluded to it or mentioned it. Did you say the state has a special financing vehicle for this? Or how exactly? Did you say the state has a special financing vehicle for this, or how exactly does that work?
It is a piece of legislation which allows cities and counties to leverage energy and operational savings as a way to help pay for projects. So you can work with an energy service company. There are many of them. We happen to be one of those. And you can enter into an agreement in which the state allows the city to say, I will be able to use those energy savings. I will actually, I will be able to capture those, quantify those, measure those, be guaranteed of those, and I can use those to pay for my project.
Retroactively? Or, I mean, is it based on estimations, or, because, I mean, the money's got to come from someplace to start the project.
Right. We would guarantee that. So currently, these are estimations. Over the next 90 days, we'd work with you and your team to guarantee those. And those savings, instead of paying your utility company, you would take that and pay for updated equipment.
So Siemens' guarantee satisfies the state legislative piece?
Correct.
All right. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Wondus?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think this sounds very intriguing, and I'm assuming that you would not, you would believe that there is adequate opportunity for improvements to be made, or you wouldn't be willing to go through the work and effort. But is there a cost involved for having us do the assessment in the first place?
For the preliminary assessment that we have just done, no. If we were to move, which we proposed to move forward, into the letter of intent, over the next 90 days, we will incur substantial engineering services. But the great piece about this legislation says that that is now part of your project. So as you decide to move forward with the project, those engineering fees would be guaranteed, and we'd be very open with those with you, but they would be rolled into the course of the project.
Thank you.
Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So then, when would we incur costs?
You would...
What I just heard you say is, part of the savings that would come down the road would be to pay you?
Well, what's unique about your situation is you've already approved a budget, right? You've already approved for the refrigeration system. So you've already had that money allocated. So we're saying, we are going to try and stretch that budget as much as possibly, so you can pay down that amount, but then receive a much larger, more comprehensive project and use energy and operational efficiencies to pay for the difference. So you would not have to incur any costs or pay us until those, you start to see those savings. And we would develop that over the next 90 days to really nail down and hone in that schedule. But we would need to know more about the scope of work, how far you really want to take this, how aggressive you want to be with the savings. We'd be working with Stevens. Over the next 90 days, we would hone in on that.
So we have a budget for the ice out there. You're saying that you can maybe shrink that budget and use some of those savings? I want to make sure I'm understanding your point.
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't count that out as an option, as an opportunity. Like I said, we need to know a lot more over the next 90 days of really how those numbers will pan out. But you do have the opportunity to have a guarantee of somewhere between, what we've estimated, between $60,000 and $120,000 a year in savings. So that is something now that you can use to pay for that project, and we'll know more, and I can answer that question exactly to the T after 90 days.
So you can't tell us tonight this is an amount that we're dealing with?
Correct. Well, yeah, because we need to define the scope of work.
It's a hard way to sell it, because I like to know what it's going to cost.
Well, you will know what it's cost before we enter into any type of contract. So we're just saying, we have identified that this is an, you have an opportunity here. So we've identified the opportunity of the savings potential. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here today. You know, if you, you might not be able to have any amount of energy savings. So, but this is an instance in which you have substantial amount of energy savings that are opportunity for you to help pay for this project or pay for a larger scope of work of a project. And just like how you would do a conceptual design in architecture and engineering, where you get the pictures, we've kind of painted the picture. Now we're asking for you to let us put some serious engineering resources towards this.
Councilmember Alvarado, followed by Figurley.
Now, I'm going to address Councilmember Nelson. Now, we've got a plan going in place. We're working on a plan for the ice arena, correct, to find out what we want to do out there? Have we talked about wanting to do that? Are they, you know, can we work with this group? Because part of that plan was to talk about something for the curlers?
Well, the plan was the master, to look at the site, master site plan. So I'd reference, that was something that the council voted on, so I'd go back to our city engineer and find out where we're at in that process.
Okay.
And how this fits together. And the ice, we haven't approved the budget yet for next year. The ice plant is being proposed for next year, but I don't know how this, how all these pieces fit together. It's, you've been working on this since July, but it's the first that we've heard about it, so.
Right.
Yep.
And so what we would do is, we would work very closely with Stevens as they start to develop that engineering. And Sean, I don't know if you want to add anymore, or?
Members of the council, Councilmember Nelson, we're talking now three different projects.
Yes.
And they should, in some cases, remain separate. Refrigeration system is, as council approved the other day, is going forward with the potential design for that to be constructed next summer. The master plan, as you mentioned, the, we just got the agreements back from them. And so that's the master plan of the complex, the whole site complex master plan. So this would be a specific project, or what Laura's talking about is a kind of an umbrella project that would encompass all of those items as potential energy savings in any, any one specific project within that master plan, if that helps.
Yeah, I believe it. I believe it. I just want to make sure that we're looking at the big picture, and we're not just looking at two pieces of ice or two buildings. I want a big scope, if that's what we're thinking.
Yeah. And I appreciate you bringing that up, because that allows me to elaborate just briefly on the, of where this could go. And this is what we're talking about, kind of, an overall transformation. So from a big-picture perspective, if you're looking at adding a third sheet of ice, what we would do is, over the next 90 days, work that into our scope of work to say that that is a, you know, a must-have, and we would make sure that all of the systems, kind of, that make that building work, would be able to adapt to a plan like that, so that by, you're not backing yourself into a corner by moving forward. So it's, it will set you up for a nice adaptability plan, but still solving some of the immediate issues that are going on with the facility currently.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, good?
Thank you.
Councilmember Figurley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Followed by Mesky.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah.
It sounds kind of familiar to Honeywell, because they did our auditorium, city hall, public works, fire station with lighting and new thermostats and stuff for heat. It looks like you might want to look into solar, too?
You know, we put it on our, on our list of things to explore. You do have a nice south-facing part of your facility there. When we did look at the numbers, though, a solar array there might, you know, it would increase the cost of the project, but you would also see some savings. So again, it's, within that next 90 days is really solidifying that scope. What do you really want to commit to? Is renewable energy something really important to you? If yes, then we'll incorporate that. If it's, you know, something that you might want to address separately, then that's an option.
How about wind? We had an architect that was big in the rec board and stuff. He said we should put a couple of smaller units out there, because it's windy enough. It should help pay for electricity out there by itself, so if you could look at that, too.
Mm-hmm. Yep. And over the investigation of the next 30 days, those are the things that we'd really dive into. So when we talked about renewable energy sources, those are anything from solar thermal, photovoltaics, wind, all bucketed into that piece.
Councilmember Mesky?
If we go back a slide?
Sure.
That would be fine. One back.
Nope, I can't.
All right, well, I understand we went with the at-risk, no-fees piece and not with that second piece. And I appreciate the moving target aspect of this. And I know you'll say, this won't happen, but if we get this 90 days by
Sure.
and we don't see an economic value to pursue, what outlay will we have to get through that 90 days? What will that cost the city if we choose not to engage?
Sure. So if you choose not to engage, we have identified a price of about $49,700. That's what we would estimate those engineering services to be, that we would obtain over the next 90 days. So that's just the value of what those hours would be. Again, that is not, no out-of-pocket cost to the city at this time, if you choose to move forward with the project. If for some reason you decide that this is not of value to you, then we would ask for compensation for that, those engineering services, just like how you would pay a typical engineering firm to do a study or an assessment. We would just, under this legislation, be able to move that forward.
Just curious, because I...
Yeah.
I'm sure they'll be identified, but I think some folks are saying...
It's a great question.
What truly is the skin in the game when the city moves forward here?
Right.
It's about $50,000, just a hair under.
Hair under.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I see favorable response to this, so we should move this to the agenda for next meeting? Okay. Thank you very much for your report, Laura.
You're welcome.
We will be looking forward to hearing the next steps, so.
Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
You bet. No problem. Robert, is electronic signature policy something we can do rather quickly?
Yes, it is, Mayor. Members of the council, you have in your packet a draft policy that will allow the city to accept electronic signatures. This is all pursuant to a state statute that is promoting the use of electric signatures and electric documents in business and government. That statute allows cities to decide for themselves when and under what circumstances and what documents it will accept electronic signatures on. The policy in your packet, the most important thing it does is it says that the city will allow electronic signatures on certain documents. If three criteria are met, if the signature is capable of verification, if it's under the sole control of the person using it, and if the signature is linked to the data so that it's reliable and ascertainable whose signature it was, after the signature is applied. The policy in your packet also allows the city administrator to determine which technologies out there satisfy these criteria. So for example, if the administrator is comfortable that Adobe makes a good electronic signature program, he can designate that signatures on that program are acceptable. That's what the policy does, and it's recommended that it be considered by the council at the next meeting.
So, council, do we want to move this to the next meeting?
Yep.
Yes. Pretty simple. Move it to the next meeting as well. We'll go into recess until our next meeting.